Okay, so are we squared away now?
I mean, I need some actual number. I guess we discussed 25% on Old Fifty Two, is that fair?
Yeah.
Yep.
And to be bid ready.
And to be bid ready.
Correct.
Right.
Yep.
Unless the project all of a sudden becomes $12 million.
Well, we can always.
Well, I can tell you this 4.2 million construction is pretty damn close because we've just done about three others exactly like this in other counties. So my per mile number is very close right now because we're doing quite a few of those right now.
So then for one, will you do the same?
But not have to be ready.
But it wouldn't be bid ready.
20% not bid ready. 20% and bid ready and not bid ready.
So what, just so everybody knows, let's figure out what that is. Because we gotta add, well, we won't add the engineering. So it'd be roughly 1.1 million on Old Fifty Two. I think I'll just call it 1.1 million. I don't think it should be exactly 25%.
Yeah.
So we'll say 1.1 million on Old Fifty Two. That does not include the preliminary engineering. No, that would just be your guys' share on the application. So then if we did 20%, because the estimate on County Road One is 2.5 million, with 10% engineering is 2.75.
About 500,000.
500,000.
20% would be 550,000, I guess. Is that in, is that doable?
That's the second.
Yep.
And the treasures.
Without being bid ready.
And the treasures.
Without, yeah, with the second one not being bid ready.
With the stuff built, it should be there, no way. Well, that's the number, I mean, you're very, very close to the number that I suggested.
If, are you guys wanting to do the, apply for the road realignment on Nineteenth? I believe it's Nineteenth, correct?
Correct.
Because I, I would maybe suggest, the only thing I would add is maybe suggest pull 100,000 out of County Road One and put that as local share on the road realignment so it's.
So it falls in that medium range of zero.
At least then you're showing some.
Yep.
Probably not.
Yep.
No offense to the people who do between County One and Highway Thirty, but County One has got to be a priority.
I think so too.
Period. If that bridge can't be funded or realigning that road, who's it affect? Nine people?
Right.
Okay?
You gotta use some common sense here.
There's a conflict on that road. It ain't gonna get hit very often.
Yeah.
So leave it the way we got it.
I do.
Bye.
That's correct. This by my head. All right, well.
All right.
You got homeworks. Now you got homework.
I got homework. We've already gotten started, I won't lie. I kind of assumed, this is close to what I assumed we'd end up at, so. Do you have anything else for me?
You're gonna go away now.
Well, actually, I'd be heck of a job. You can be around every day and still be your job. Anything else for me?
Thank you, Jason.
Thank you.
Thanks, guys.
Thank you.
You got another meeting to be at at 1:00, don't you?
Yep.
And that one's gonna be a lot.
Last year.
Last year.
Well, we got 30 bridges and we gotta get it.
Oh, the Gary County?
Yeah.
They're honorary over there.
That's where he's going next.
Usually they get along, but today's gonna be different.
Dr. Belvert, right?
Doc relative is working there, look out.
There's a new commissioner out there, is he?
Yeah, I am a man.
Cowaner.
Cowaner Belvert.
Great. If you think of any, anything else coming up.
Yeah, give me a call later today after your meeting.
Sounds good.
Good morning, Brian.
How are you guys?
Good.
All right. I got updates on two other projects. Structure on Highway One north of town here. That one, we completed the hydraulics on. So we got two options for you guys. That's the main thing. We gotta, get squared away today. So when we ran the hydraulics, the first option we did was, so we, it's a 25-year design storm and then a 100-year. We also had a flood event. So the first option we did was, so there'd be no increase to tailwater for the 100-year event. What that came out to be was a double-span 105-foot bridge. And then, so the second option we went to, 105 is kind of right on the edge of where you do a single-span or a double-span. So the second option we went to look at was, what would we need to do to get it to a single-span bridge? And that was, we'd beef up the beams a bit and then we got it down to an 87-foot single-span bridge. But that would come with about a three-inch rise to upstream floodwaters during a 100-year event. But looking at the topography of the current structures, there's nothing within two miles of the bridge upstream. So three inches to the 100-year flood event is pretty insignificant. You're allowed to go up to a foot, so. That's kind of, that would be the direction we're leaning towards. Single-span, you're gonna be cheaper. You don't have that pier in the center of the river for recatch and waste jam and whatever else, so. That would be our suggestion.
And you said that's an 87-foot?
Yep, 87-foot. The existing structure there now is a 60-foot, so it'll be decent amount longer. A lot of that comes from just sloping the, they have vertical abutments now, but just for longevity and scour and riprap erosion control, the geotech, it's usually a three-to-one slope coming out. So that's what, where the bridge length usually get to be about that 20, 30 feet over there. So that, I guess, is the main decision that I'd be looking for you guys today. This project's still on track to be constructed next year. Like a January, February bid opening. So once we get this done, we'll get cruising on hydro, or cruising on design and get all the permits and environmental and everything on the ground on this one. Really, the only, yeah, I don't know. The only benefit to the, doing the longer bridge, the double-span is there's no increase to the upstream floodwaters, but like you said.
For interest in that.
Yeah, very cheap.
Yeah. The single-span's definitely gonna be cheaper. You don't have to do the concrete.
Well, it's like inches once every 100 years, I think we have upstream.
Yeah. Putting that stuff into the middle of the stream can possibly ease up the work.
Right. And just from a maintenance standpoint, there's a lot more concerns. You guys are good with that, we'll go with the single-span.
Yep.
Sounds good. And then the other two bridges, and I think that's where you guys are talking about, the realignment. So that, those ones are funded, complete replacements for 2027. And those are off-system bridges, so they're 100% funded too. So you guys don't have any local share on those. So we've got the hydraulics done on those. They're both gonna be triple, triple concrete box over, 10-by-14.
Isn't the funding for those bridges, some of that going over to County One?
So we, we just flipped them. So, because County One was obviously the higher priority with it being load-posted now. So what we did was, we just asked DOT, since these ones were already funded but not as high a priority, and then the loadposting came up on Highway One, we asked if we could flip them. And they said, yes, that's fine, but just know that the other two are, at least 2027, might be pushed out for their 2028. But they're, the money's still there, they're picked, it's just, when will it come in? So, yeah, so those box overalls are still.
That changes things on.
That changes things for road engineering for number three.
We don't have a number three anymore.
That is, well, we don't anymore, but.
We don't anymore.
Correct. Correct. That's why I asked that question.
Right. Right.
So, yeah, those two bridges.
Either did I.
100%.
I don't think any of us did.
I was under.
We didn't.
Yeah, I was under the assumption that the funding for those two bridges was moved over to County One and the funding went away for those two bridges.
Me too. That's what, that's what I thought.
Yeah, no, it didn't go away, just pushed back into the near future. So they're still there and.
I'll reach out, I'll reach out to Jason. I'll reach out to Jason. He doesn't even need to bother working on our project three on that.
No.
Okay.
No, neither.
Yeah.
We'll be here and talk to him soon.
Yeah.
Yeah, and then as far as, as far, I'm sorry. But as far as the realignment goes, I mean, I know we had talked about that a little bit too early in project development, you just get rid of one of those bridges, but I mean, they're both funded now at 100%, so I mean, just, I think you just keep it straight through and not worry about it.
My memory starts to come back to me in that, didn't you suggest that the state or whoever would pay for some of that if we only needed one bridge, but that wasn't an option, right?
Right.
They don't do stuff like that.
Well, if they're all funded, plus it's way more than trying to reroute.
Yeah. Well, if we save the state a bridge in one, you think they'd pay for the rerouting? But they don't do that.
They don't think that.
Well, it's a different department.
It's a different pot of money, so they can't, they don't like to use the bridge funds from the roadway and it just, so it gets more complicated that way, but.
Brian, refresh my slash our memory. Our share of that bridge is roughly $400,000.
For Highway One?
Yeah. So you guys allow 20% of construction, construction engineering. An 87-foot bridge, you're probably at 1.2 million, so two and a half. And then with the preliminary engineering, it'll be around 400.
And that, that is on track to be bid in January or February?
Yeah. Yep, January, February. We got, like you said, the hydraulics, so if you guys are good with that, single-span, we'll get pushing on that. And then there's permits we gotta get and everything, but I don't think, January, February should be, should be good on most. And then, yeah, construction 2026. We'd have a fall completion date. September, October, whatever that falls. And then, yeah, like the box overalls, we're not really pushing on those that far, I mean, as they're 2027, 2028 funded, so.
Yep.
We got the hydraulics done now, so we'll start permits process just so we're ready in case some money frees up somewhere and go on those. That's what I got for you guys. You guys, obviously Jason talked through the flex fund, but if you got questions or want a second opinion on anything, feel free to reach out.
Thank you very much, Brian.
Yep.
Okay, very good. PRC guys.
What is that?
It's in your head.
Who's that? Not on the wing?
It's in his head.
Yeah. Driving me nuts.
You're hard of hearing, like me, I don't know your thing.
I normally am. Are you guys hearing it? Okay, I'm not the only one here.
I got a question for you, Brent, quick one. I'm like, why did Walt say, Walt doesn't know that them other two bridges were 100% funded? Or what, why are we at this circumstance? Why are we at this?
I don't know. Well, all of us, I mean, I.
I don't get it.
I don't get it either.
Walt certainly wouldn't know, but they don't know what.
The next engineer's doing.
Yeah. Yeah, that's why I fell out of my chair when he said that.
Right. K L J worked on these bridge projects.
Yeah, they've been, well, you gotta remember, Walt was the one that got us, that did the work to get the money. And then you guys met with engineering firms and you chose K L J, so Walt's been out of the fold on that for two years now.
And that's like to say, you could talk.
Yeah, but like I said, I didn't know it either. None of us did.
All right, we'll discuss that later. Hi, guys.
Hi.
Morning.
I just brought water to win.
Water to win.
Bridges to towers.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, thanks for having us, Chair and Commissioners and staff. I'm Paul White, Welsen McGifford with PRC. And also we have Luke Berkeley from PRC, while working on the Flickertail Wind Project and here to provide an update on the project development activities since, since in recent couple of months. Looking back to June, we all worked through settling some changes in zoning for wind energy. And since that time, we've been primarily focused on the community engagement side to make sure that we're connecting with the community, not just the folks that are signed up in the project, not just the folks that are, that we run into, that show up, but reaching out and trying to track down the folks that might live near the project, that might be outside of, but near the project site. And that's been kind of a, there've been emails, calls, letters, and in particular, asset or benefit has been working through the townships. The townships have been extremely helpful for tracking down, finding out who lives where, who's out there, what's the conversation in the community, can we meet with those folks? So that, I, I'm emphasizing it a little because it really has, it's been important to make sure that folks don't slip through the cracks that didn't hear about it or whatnot, or were out of town. But also, it's something that we've, we've sensed that, you know, there's great concern that we make sure everybody is up to speed and knows what's going on. So we've really leaned into that. And in fact, in addition to everything I described through working with the townships and the usual databases, we also mailed to, mailed out material about the project to approximately 800 home households in the, in the project, around the project area, specifically non-participants in the area. And just to cast a web out there and then invite folks to contact us. We did hear from, maybe 10% of those said, yeah, we're interested, please keep us up to date on what's happening with it. And we also followed up with calls of folks who were in areas where we were really looking at designing and putting through lines and all that. So that's been the primary focus in the last 60 days to make sure that we're caught up. And what that has resulted in is, you know, better knowledge of where the community, where sensitive areas might be from a community perspective and, and areas where folks are really looking to have equipment and turbines. I have some maps to show the results of that work, current, you know, snapshot of what the project looks like. It's quite different from what you've seen previously, so there's been a lot of adjustments. So I'm gonna hold up one map and maybe we can hand out, I have some handouts for you all.
Valhalla or Bremen Township? Valhalla or Bremen?
Valhalla.
That's where most of the towers are gonna be.
We'll talk, talk through. Yeah, dynamic. I'm gonna ask Wells to talk through some of the specifics. Wells has personally been involved in working.
Aren't they involved?
Working. The project area is involved.
Yeah.
The turbines are involved.
Yeah.
Oh, there's no turbines in Bremen?
So, I, I'm gonna, as you're looking, I apologize, I don't wanna distract you from looking at it, but I can maybe stand up some, I'm pinned behind the board here. We attended the Bremen Township meeting where they actually were talking about bringing back their own zoning ordinance.
Yeah.
And we, we've been regularly engaged in both townships. And what we identified, working with the township supervisors, which I think people can know for Bremen and Valhalla, is that we did identify, as Paul mentioned, those hotspots where people were, you know, really kind of concerned. And then kind of overlaying that with the updated zoning ordinance, right? And so we overlay the zoning ordinance and the Bremen area, actually the turbines were.
Too close to town, right?
Yep.
Were too close to town.
Well, within a mile of those, yep, I'm saying.
Said they took them out, they're not gonna put them.
That's right. We had a few areas.
Are they gonna replace them somewhere else?
Well, so that, I'll talk through that a little bit. I'll give you kind of a rundown. But what we ended up having to do in that case, right, you've got a landowner that wants to host turbines and folks that are concerned about proximity and the zoning. We actually had very good engagement and were able to get that resolved amicably. We're gonna work with the landowners that, you know, wanted to host those turbines and we're working that out directly with that landowner. So we were able to kind of smooth that situation or avoid, you know, kind of neighbors getting upset with neighbors. Because that's one of our goals, is to really take the tension down and not, not have neighbors or community members upset with each other. So we did resolve kind of that area. What you're seeing in the layout, the red or the, kind of the darker orange circle is that one-mile setback. And what we have been in process of doing, and there was a lot of good work with Bremen Township Supervisor and the Valhalla Supervisor is, and we worked with Wells County, is we went through every single resident within their townships and identified primary, which requires a one-mile setback based on the zoning, and then a non-primary, which does not require that one-mile setback. So that was the.
The original hunters.
That's right, yep. And so we, we spent the time, went through all of that, put the list together, we presented that to Wells County. I think we're working through that process to make sure we get that finalized. So this is work in process, so this is not a final, final layout. But I think based on our investigation, those are the distinctions where if it's a primary residence, we're outside of a mile, if it's a non-primary, we are within that mile. The key piece is we've been reaching out to everyone, as Paul mentioned, and within our community benefit agreement, we've upped our compensation. So any turbines within a mile, those folks will receive compensation, even though it's a non主 primary residence. And so that's been very well received. What I can say is the folks.
All about money.
I'm not, that's your, that's your comment, but my, our point, our point is, is they expressed their concern having it close to their residence, whether it's a primary non, and we wanted to make sure they're, you know, were taken care of. And I think we've heard that at these hearings, we've heard that probably through the phone calls you guys were getting. So we've taken that step. And so that actually has been very well received. So I think we are on a path. We still have a few residents that we're trying to, as Paul mentioned, we've done the outreach, we've asked people, invited people, we're still trying to make some connections. So what I can't say is that we've connected directly and had meetings with every individual. We are endeavoring to do that. And so that's our goal, is to have a sit-down and meet with those folks. So it's work in process that we're continuing to do. But I think from, you know, I know it was painful, kind of this process we went through, but I would say it worked, right? We heard from the community, we heard from members of Wells County, the townships. We passed the zoning ordinance that gave us guidance on what, what we could do and couldn't do. And so our team got busy and we really went to work on getting something that will work in concert with what will appease and hopefully excite the community about us listening and getting it right for them. We did have to eliminate some turbines, so that, that was part of the process. So it's not like we were able to shift them and put them in different places necessarily, but the good news is, we did find good, good locations, not significant impact, meet the environmental requirements. So I think we're pleased with the outcome. I guess it's kind of from our standpoint, we're pleased with the outcome of the, of the work with Wells County and the townships and, and, you know, kind of our next steps in this whole process. So our goal is to come back in another month and give you guys an update. As I mentioned, this is work in process. We're continuing to do the outreach. We are hosting an open house over in New Rockford tomorrow night. That's open to the public. We invited, I think, broadcast that. We plan to actually host another event here in Peasenden, maybe in a couple, two, three weeks. So we're still trying to get that feedback, get input, allow people to, to, to share their thoughts, incorporate that into the design. We are, you know, engineers are working on the layout. It's not just the dots on the map, we gotta make sure the roads fit, the cables connect. And then we're out doing some geotech, so we will have some folks in the field. We've gotta do some more environmental work in addition. But we're really thinking that this layout is, is coming together nicely and wanted to kind of share our update today, but know that we're gonna be coming back if, if the opportunity is given to us. We'd love to provide an update. And that'll be kind of more of that preview of, we're gonna be working with the townships on, on kind of meeting their requirements and then kind of leading up to, you know, the application with the county, so that we're kind of stepwise with you all, so there's no surprises on, on what's gonna be presented to Wells County. So I wanted to just open it up, if you had any questions or, you know, continue, if you do have folks calling with concerns or any information they need, let us know. We really appreciate those discussions. I forgot to mention the one big piece with the county, and we'll be working with Brent on this, is the road use agreement. So this month, that's gonna be a heavy push, is the agreement itself, but then we're working on the roads that, that we're planning. We still haven't finalized all the routes, but that we're planning to utilize, so at the county level, at the township level. And so we'll be sitting down with the township supervisor, we'll come in and meet with you, we'll have an agreement. It's in draft form and we'll just collaborate on getting that process right. And so that'll be a big push. You'll hear, staff will hear from us this month on that road use agreement and also engage with the townships.
Best guess, how far are you away from?
We're talking by early October is, is kind of where we wanna be presenting an application. And we'll give you an update in a month from now to let you know if that's.
So actual construction will start?
We're planning for 2027 for construction.
We're done next year?
We would like to, but we'll let you know. I think right now, we're trying to figure that out, but really the, the plan is to start construction in 27. We may do some county road improvements next year and we would coordinate that under the road use agreement just to get ready for construction. But I think the main construction will start in 27 and then we'll be in 2027.
You can do it here? I mean, in theory.
Yeah.
I mean.
We still got time to get into the cement business.
We do.
Lots of cement coming. Hopefully your phones aren't ringing as much as they were.
Oh, I bet.
That's one of the things, we wanted to get that tension out and try to resolve that. We're still continuing to do that, so we.
So it didn't shut the project down, well, setback of the variance, did it?
Well, we reduced the overall.
Two. Two.
Well, there's. Yeah, it's roughly 20% overall, right? So this, it, it changes which turbines we can utilize. It had some impacts, but no.
They could add two more sometimes.
Well, we're, believe me, we're trying to hold on to every location we can.
I'm sure they could, there's nobody out.
Well.
It wouldn't be, never mind. But I appreciate you guys being upfront and.
Thank you.
Full of sill.
Yeah. Thank you for the opportunity and please, you know, if you have any questions, turn to us and, and I guess we're glad to be part of your Wells County, so thank you.
You're welcome.
Thanks for coming in.
I hope they got any other questions.
No, thank you.
Thank you, guys.
Have a good rest of your day.
Yep, you guys too.
Then you provide public notice to Wells County. This is in accordance with the U S C S Rules of Civil Procedures, as well as Rule 17 and Rule 20 in the United States Supreme Court. The Constitution of the United States has the overarching requirements that every state must follow. I don't think anyone here would deny that. And the states cannot enact their own alternative legislation, such as to make for the guarantees of the Constitution of the United States. That would mean that the state's laws are now more powerful than the Constitution. Clause one of amended by the United States Constitution says, "No person shall be held answered for capital or otherwise impugous crimes unless on presentment or grand jury." However, the state of North Dakota has enacted its own alternative legislation that permits the prosecuting attorney or police officer to charge by information, not by indictment. That is unconstitutional. or police officer to charge by information, not by indictment. That is unconstitutional.